So, we say "growing year," right Tyler?
Right.
And so that's what we just kept saying, we had nowhere to grow it up.
Building.
Yes, it's building year. And I know we have two of my players here right now too, but it was a really, we had a really good season. A lot of... Oh yeah, okay. All right, come on in, just a second please. Yes, just a second, come on. Okay, and is there some of our other players who are on the team? And we had, I was just saying it was like a learning year, we had nowhere to grow it up because we scored a lot, the other skating teams scored more. So, anyway.
But most importantly, they had fun every team.
We did, we did. Everybody, yep, we always laughed. My booth. Okay, that's not me. Okay. Okay, so, just a second. You guys? Okay, shit's working.
Well, we actually have certificates for every member of the team and the coaches, so we'll read off everyone's name.
Okay.
And then if you're here, you can get your certificate and we'll give the rest to you, so you can pass them out.
And I'm gonna add in what their awards were if they're here.
Perfect.
That's all right with you? Okay.
Austin Ross.
He's not here. Tennis, what am I saying?
Sarah Schmidt.
Sarah Schmidt, who is season leader with points, with 34 points for the season, number three, and she's one of our seniors, who will be leaving us this year. Congratulations. Oh, sorry. Thank you. Congratulations.
Kelly Vincent.
Kelly Vincent is here, yes, and she's gonna be with us another year. Yay! Congratulations.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Michaela Corbett.
Michaela Corbett was not able to make it, but Michaela won our best sportsmanship award this year. And she's a senior also, so she'll be leaving our team.
Rachel Aruda.
Rachel Aruda is not here either. She received our most improved offensive award this year, and she's also a senior who will be leaving us.
Amanda Humphrey.
Amanda is here, and she's a senior who will be leaving us as well this year.
Jason, thank you so much.
Mr. Tyler.
Tyler is here. Tyler received the most improved defensive award this year by number 13, lucky 13 was Tyler. Congratulations. Nice job. And Tyler is a freshman, so we get him for another three years.
Ryan Booth.
Ryan Booth is not here, but he got the best trick shot award.
I'd love to learn more about that.
Oh, we have to show you. I think he had, actually, he had like a swimming practice or something for the state on special ed skates, anyway.
Blake Stamos.
Blake is not here either, he's involved with tennis. And he got, he got the most optimistic award actually. He was always smiling, no matter what was going on in the game, always.
Ryan Lisette.
Ryan Lisette is not here.
Haley Parenti.
Haley Parenti is not here either, but she got our season leader assistance award, and she's a sophomore, so she'll be with us another couple of years. Freshman.
Destiny Barber.
Destiny Barber is here, and Destiny got our season leader in rebounds award this year. And Destiny is a senior who will be leaving us as well.
Emily Packerini.
Emily is here. Yes, Emily will be leaving us this year. Congratulations.
Miranda Sattey.
Miranda is not here, but she received an award to Destiny. Miranda had to work this year, I mean tonight, and she received our award for season leader in block shots.
Carissa Embray.
She, oh, she's not a lot, Miranda was awesome. Oh gosh.
Carissa Embray.
Chris Embray is not here either.
Alex DeTara.
Alex is not here either, no, no, but he received our most improved. Yes, now they had a conflict, it's just a busy seat, a busy time here.
And then our coaches, Stephanie Larilla.
Stephanie.
And Mr. Boucher.
Mr. Boucher is a fantastic.
And Mrs. Campbell here.
I am here. Thank you.
How are you?
Thank you, thank you so much. Thanks, Mrs. Campbell. Thank you all. Appreciate it.
Excellent job.
Nice job. (applause) Yes, if you put mine this way.
What are you doing?
Yeah, what's it, why is it going to do this?
Because it's been silent for a little bit. No, because you'll be flipping the slides, it'll be weird.
So you want IT night?
Oh yeah, kind of.
Why don't you go see if you can help it? I could just figure it's open before you do it.
A bit more with the...
Here we go.
There we go.
Okay. You're up.
Good evening Chair Pandy, School Committee members, Superintendent Derek Mckays, Director of Admin, Mr. Ross, and members of my staff and parents, Mr. Dillon. Welcome to the end of the year Special Ed Services presentation. Tonight, I'm gonna focus on the following topics: parent involvement, and that will be with a brief summary from our local advisory committee, the CRP, consolidated resource plan, and its expenditures, which I have to report publicly per ride, then also our group home status, and comparison to our state and national percentages for students who we make eligible for special services, how we compare to the state and to national numbers. And then we're gonna do a little piece on access to the Common Core standards for students with disabilities, and I have Julie Kennedy here, who's going to review a project that she did with one of our students at the high school. And then also, we have a project done in our speech and language department in collaboration with Rhode Island College, and we have Shelby Delos here, who's going to talk us through that. And then also, school support professionals will be doing some studies on current mental health issues in our district, and some numbers to give. So, let's get started. So, Mr. Dillon, I would ask that you step forward and give the committee a little summary of the activities of the LAC.
Thank you very much, Kamal. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you to the committee members. The Exeter West Greenwich Special Education Local Advisory Committee, it's proud to deliver its annual report to the Exeter West Greenwich School Committee for the school year 2014-2015. The LAC would first like to offer its gratitude to the members of the school committee for their support of special education in the district, and especially, the committee would like to thank Kamela Farah, Director of Special Education, and Valerie Zurcha, school committee member and liaison to the LAC for their support and assistance. The committee would also like to recognize the special education teachers in the district, too numerous to mention, for their professionalism and skill in delivering special education to the children of the district. In August 2014, members of the CLAC participated in open houses at Lynham, Wauwum, and Metcalf Schools to educate parents about the function of the local advisory committee. In September 2014, the CLAC sponsored an ice cream social for children with special needs at Metcalf School. Chief Dave Chamberlain of the Exeter Volunteer Fire Company One provided a fire truck that the children loved. Members of the committee solicited volunteers and contributions to provide ice cream, karaoke, and face painting for the children. A great time was had by all. In October 2014, members of the CLAC attended Rhode Island Parents Information Network Annual Dinner. The committee members were able to meet and network with other CLACs. In December 2014, the CLAC sponsored a workshop conducted by Phyllis Lynch, Assessment and Curriculum Director for the Rhode Island Department of Education. Ms. Lynch addressed parents' concerns and questions regarding the PAC and how it impacts children with special needs. In December 2014, the CLAC was invited to participate in the District-wide Five-Year Strategic Planning Committee. The CLAC continues to participate in and support this effort. The CLAC will be sending out a survey this month to the parents of children with special needs to determine how we can better serve them. On June 8th, 2015, the CLAC is sponsoring another workshop provided by the Rhode Island Parent Information Network titled "IEP: A Blueprint for Success: Preschool and L.M. Mentoring." Our future goals include attracting more parents to participate in the CLAC and to continue to advise and advocate for students with special needs. At this time, I would request at the behest of the CLAC that the school committee approve the proposed CLAC bylaws changes, which you have a copy of.
Mike, you amended those, right? You made a couple of changes.
Yeah, very, very, yeah, very, very small changes, and the changes were all with the intention of increasing participation and making it easier for people to... One of the things that we wanted to do, that we wanna do is provide childcare through the senior class, or junior or senior class, to parents with small children, so that they can come to the meetings, the LAC meetings, and do that. I think that's a worthy goal, but it's something that's for next year.
So, the next couple of slides, I don't wanna spend a lot of time on, you have that information in your packets, but every year I am required to report publicly how we save from CRP. I have to tell you, it's pretty consistent every year from previous years, and as you can see, the majority of the CRP grant is utilized to cover salaries and benefits of our staff. It currently includes six staff members throughout the district, and I'll just review those quickly for you. It covers teachers, and it also covers a teacher assistant, as well as a behavior specialist, and a .16 speech and language therapist. So, again, the largest percentage goes towards salary and benefits. We also use it for instructional equipment, supplies and materials, all things above and beyond what the district budget supports. I have to also emphasize that this year, there was no increase in the grant allocation. We have not really gotten any increase in the last three or four years, so we have to be very careful with any of those funds. Any questions on that piece? And then the preschool as well, we do get an allocation for our preschool. Again, you can see that the majority of those funds are used for, again, salary and benefits. Those salary and benefits go towards our ESY, our Extended School Year Program, for the preschool teacher and the teacher assistants that participate in that program over the summer, and then supplies and materials and other purchase services. We've been very fortunate in the last couple of years, and Mrs. Corsi, our early childhood coordinator, will talk about that in a little while, too, have received several grants that also help supplement the program and continue to grow it and make it even better. Our group home status. I just wanted you to see, Exeter House has a bed, and the beds are filled, and some of those students, you can see where those students are placed, we have two students at Pathways, four at Bradley. We had one student at West Warwick High School on Saturday, and I must report, we lost that man a couple of weeks ago, very sad, and then one student at the Groden Center. Arcadia Children's Home, eight beds are filled, and their placements are, we have four students at Metcalf, three at Wauwum, and then one at Bradley's School. Any questions on that? And then, I know I get this question from folks every year, how do we compare in regards to the number of students that we find eligible for special services as compared to the state and the national average? When I first took the position, we were at about 19 percent. Now, mind you, we had a larger population, we had larger enrollment, but one of the things we ran into some difficulties with was that we were just what we called disproportionate. We were up at many, too many students, so we were up at 19 percent. When you identify too many students, you then need to use a large, 15 percent of your CRP grant in order to make sure that doesn't happen in early intervention services. So we've worked real hard at trying to make sure that when we are identifying students, it is because they truly have disabilities and they need that specialized instruction. And then with the advent of us developing response to intervention, K through 12 in our district, that also helps to support it. So for us, and this is 2013-2014 data, we are at about, that number's a little higher, we're a little closer to 13 percent, I think it was 12.8 percent the last time I checked it, but that's still a good number, because the state percentage is at 15 percent, so I think we're in good shape with that. The national numbers, that was the most recent that I could find, interesting enough, and the national average was at 13 percent. So, I'm feeling very comfortable that we're where we need to be in terms of how we're identifying students and not over identifying. Any questions for me? Okay, so, what I also thought would be very important to talk a little bit about is how we, how do we address, how do we give students with disabilities access to the Common Core, state standards? That's been the concern of a lot of teachers, a lot of parents, because the Common Core standards are so rigorous, and for students with disabilities, they can be challenging. But there are ways to reduce the barriers to learning. So, that being said, I'm going to preface this with a little iPad presentation, I'm hoping it works, and if it doesn't, well, we're gonna see what happens. And this was, this was done with the help of Art Cerron, he was very instrumental in helping me be able to do this, so let's see what happens. So, all kids come to us very acquisitive, they wanna learn, right? And they have the desire to learn, but some students, some students, such, let's take this young man right here, okay? This is Bruce, okay? As you can tell with Bruce, you can tell he's ready to learn, he's all gung ho, and accessing his reading in his math, it's not gonna be an issue for him, he's gonna be just fine, right? He's gonna go from here to here, and if you notice my lovely little graphics, that's all the things we expect kids to have in their brains, and then we funnel it, and there's the brain here. So, we're hoping all of that information gets into that brain by the time they leave us. So Bruce, he's not gonna have any problems, because he's always ready to learn, and he's gonna just be absolutely fine. Now, this young man, Jake. Jake, as you can tell, you might guess, what do you think he has? What do you think? He has a math disability maybe, because he's holding his head and he's seeing, you know, all those math symbols, so for him, being able to access math, he tries, but every time he attempts to do it, it's just too hard for him to do it. So for him to get from here to over here, very, very difficult. This is Patty. What do you think Patty's problem might be?
Pardon? Concentrating.
Well, concentration, yeah. What do you think her disability might be? No, can't sit still, moving all over the place. Perhaps she's ADHD, perhaps she's other health and care, so cognitively very capable, but because she's so distractible, and we know many students like this, she hits that wall reading in a nap, it's very hard for her, and they're practicing the word because of that. Here we have Nils, okay? Poor Nils. That teacher's talking to him, he's not hearing a word that the teacher is saying to him. Notice no eye contact, kinda scratching his head, perhaps he's a child on the spectrum. And children on the spectrum have a very difficult time understanding people's language, understanding what is saying to them, processing information, so again, depending on where they are on the spectrum, he could be very bright, but he hits that wall when it comes to that reading and that math, okay? Now, here we have Suzie. What do you think Suzie's issue is?
Overwhelmed.
Pardon?
Overwhelmed.
Well, she's overwhelmed, but what does she have next to her?
Reading.
Lots of books.
Right.
So, we asked Suzie to read on a daily basis, and not only does she have to read in reading, but she has to read in science and math, all throughout her day, so you can imagine how frustrating that might be, because she can't get from here to there, because it's too difficult for her. And then our last young man, this is Stevie, and Stevie asks a lot of questions. He's probably got a language disability, because when people talk to him, he may not understand what they're saying to him. It may be difficult for him receptively to take in what his math teacher is saying to him, or what his reading teacher is saying to him, and because there's so much language in our learning now, clearly, that's going to be an obstacle. So what do we do? Well, there's some real basic, simple things that allow students with disabilities to have access to the Common Core and to their education, and it is not rocket science at all, it is really very simple. So, for a child with a math disability, something as simple as a calculator, something as simple as a number chart, something as simple as manipulatives will make it easy for this young man to go from here to here and be successful. Very basic. For Patty, who has attention deficit, or has distractibility issues, or focus issues, again, very basic, basic strategies that can be put in place to give them that, to give her access. She needs to be organized, so give her an agenda. She needs to sometimes tune out a lot of, a lot of extraneous noise and distractions, so you can give her headphones. Sometimes for students who have attention deficit difficulties, the use of a computer helps keep them focused and bring them in, and again, allows them access to the curriculum. These are all very basic things, things we have at our disposal on a regular basis. And then there's Nils, okay? Little bit more complicated sometimes, but for children on the spectrum, it can be something as simple rules and what's expected of him on a regular basis. It could be something as simple as an agenda, so he knows what to expect in every part of his day. It could be something as simple as a picture schedule, so that he knows at each part of his day, this is weird, he's gonna go to math, and then he's gonna go to reading and so forth. We're making picture schedules for kids all of the time, and they are very effective. And then that helps, again, Nils, to be able, to get it all into his brain and be successful. And then, there's Suzie, and the reading. And for reading, it can be something as basic as a teacher read, it could be a PR read, a read aloud, it could be an application such as Book Share, which is free to us as a district and students with disabilities, and what happens with Book Share is text is read aloud, those students can hear it and see it, gives them access. It's a wonderful thing, and it doesn't cost anything, and we have the technology to do it. And then lastly, there's our young man who has a language disorder, and again, some things are very similar, headphones might help, a picture schedule might help, ETHM systems help, Word banks help, there are many different ways to give this young man access, so that he can be successful in school. Okay? Just wanted to give you that brief little idea of how we can do some very simple things to give children access to the Common Core, and we have to do that, that is something we're required to do. That being said, I'm gonna ask Mrs. Kennedy to come up and talk about something that, very creative, that she did for a student in her Accounting One classroom, to allow that child to have access.
Well, I'm Julie Kennedy, my thanks for the invitation, and I thank Mrs. Maroc for inviting me, I don't feel very special, but she thinks what I did was special, so I'll share it with you. I had a student named Michaela in my account. I had a student named Michaela in my Accounting. I've been at the high school since 1992, and I've worked with many, many teacher aides and students with various challenges, IEPs, Bible floors, and most of the modifications that we used have always worked for me. They've worked well. And as she pointed out, there's a whole toolkit of them. But when I got Michaela this year, I'd never had a student quite like Michaela. She presented some challenges that I hadn't experienced before, but I had my toolkit all ready. I knew she was gonna be in my class. And I started doing them. We were modifying vocab, we were modifying some of the quizzes. She was not... She was doing it, but clearly, it wasn't doing anything for her. And she would have continued doing whatever I asked her to do and would not have questioned me, but I quickly realized that what we were doing wasn't working for her. So, I knew she worked in Miss Campbell's class cafe. So I thought, okay, it's accounting, it's money, why not do some work with currency? So we found some online programs that helped her learn how to make change, but she was sitting with the computer, and she wasn't interacting with me or the rest of the class. So I thought, well... So we did that for a little while. Then I thought, well, she could probably get the concept of, you know, not debit and credit so much, but increase, decrease in accounting if we gave her some journals and showed her how to increase a journal when you did some work and decrease it when you paid some bills. So we began, or Agent Miss Windell, who's not here, but who was absolutely critical in this whole mission, started talking to her about what she liked to do. And she mentioned she did some cleaning at a local hotel over the summer. I'm not sure if she was doing a job cleaning.
It was a job, okay, so...
And she really liked cleaning. So we thought, oh, maybe she can open up a cleaning company in the school, and she can keep books with a cleaning company. So we talked to her about it, and we talked about it, and we talked more about it. It seemed like it could work. So, I have her period one AP, so we found out how many teachers would read that block, because we don't want her willy-nilly around the school. Miss Windell went with her. So we started a research project. We looked at what cleaning company would charge, you know, Department of Labor and Training, what kind of training would you need, how could you set it up? Michaela had done a prior project, and I think Mrs. Marah has a sample of it. She had done an art project that showed these hands with some kind of a musical thing. We were trying to think of a name for the company, so we came up with Helping Hands Cleaning. That's a drawing that she had done for another class, not for me. And we kind of joked around a little bit. We started whistling while we worked, so that became her little slogan. So this is something that she put together, dusting, disinfecting, organizing, all these other good things that she could do that were safe for her to do. We got in touch a little while. Teachers told her, and we announced the business. She did an oral presentation for Helping Miss syrup, which was really quite a feat for Michaela, because she was nervous. She does have a speech issue. So it kind of came together. So she was keeping her journals. We had fake money. We didn't want to start judging people real money for this, because we weren't sure how well that would go. So we had fake money. So she would give them invoices, and she had her invoices made with business cards or all that stuff made. So she charged someone like seventeen dollars. They would give her like twenty-five, so she'd have to make change to give back to them, so she did that. Just, we kept a small set of books that had a general journal and some ledgers, kind of described what she did. It was a profound experience for me in Connecticut, Connecticut since 1992, and I've never, ever done anything like this. But it was like a perfect storm, because I had Miss Windell, who's her aide. So while I was teaching the other kids, Miss Windell could take her out on the cleaning jobs, because I couldn't let her go by herself. That wouldn't have been a real safe or a long life thing. And the other kids in the class were wonderful with her, you know, and the biggest thing... I mean, like I say, I felt a lot out of myself, and I think Michaela did too. She sees me, she smiles, she shares a lot of personal, you know, what she did over the weekend. And I've seen Michaela in the building for a few years now. She used to do recycling. She'd come into your room, she'd get the bucket, and she'd be barely make out contact with you. She'd look at you, look at you, say the word. But now she knows me, and I know her, so I'd see her in the hallway, I'd get a big smile on her. She's just wrapped up the business this week. She is a senior, she just did her senior project. And like any teenager, she's checking out. And she's a senior, and she knows that she's gonna be down, she's ready to go. So I asked her today, you know, you wanna do any more cleaning jobs? There's still another four or five days to go, and she's kind of like done with it. And she's ready to graduate. So we're back, we're doing some currency work in class. We're back at currency. And a piece that I didn't get, that I thought maybe if I had this experience again, is she needs repetition, because we went back to the change-making, and it's almost like it's gone. So she didn't do as well today as she has in the past, so we'll do some homework with that during the week.
Well, that's a very important point. It is about repetition and practice. And I think the important piece of this for Mrs. Kennedy is the fact that she was willing to really, and we use the phrase quite often, "think outside of the box", but she took the principles of the Accounting class. She was able to expand it and make it accessible to a student with disabilities. And that is happening in many places throughout the district. But this was a profound example to me when I heard it explained at an IEP meeting. So I... And it's unfortunate Michaela's not here tonight. We had hoped she would be, but this will make a profound difference for her as well, so.
Thank you.
So for time's sake, I just, if you could certainly, if you have not already, Matt Savoy was going to try it here, but he has a classroom page, which is absolutely wonderful. And in that, in his, on his page, he includes a monthly calendar so that students are able to see exactly what assignments they are required to do. And every lesson that he has is like a building graduate organizer. It's amazing what he has done for this science classroom. I'm not gonna go through it now, but certainly, if you have an opportunity, you should really take a look at that. Again, a perfect example of what teachers are doing to give students with disabilities access. It's very meaningful and important. And again, helps students to become more and more successful. I would now like to introduce Catherine Sur. She is my speech-language pathologist at the Junior-Senior High School. Shelby Delos, who is Rhode Island College Speech and Language Pathologist intern.
You have them. Thank you so much, Mrs. Marah, for inviting us. And we're excited to kind of share this project. I was hoping that my two seniors could be here as well, to prevent, you just heard about Michaela, so she was one of the students that went on this project. She's very busy. And Rachel Rudow is the other student. I'm gonna give you just a little bit of background before Shelby kind of talks to you about the actual project. So in a meeting that I had months ago with one of the speech pathologists at Metcap, she had described that she wanted to work with all the students in just the general ed setting to talk to them about how to be a good friend to the kids that had communication disorders. So articulation difficulties, language processing difficulties, autism, cochlear implants. I said, that is an awesome idea. And she said, oh, you know, I'd like to use some technology. And I said, if I could get my seniors, who are kind of, you know, they're good at working technology, if I could get them to work on a project for you, would you be willing to do that and kind of work with them? And she said, absolutely. And it just so happened that I was extremely fortunate to also partner up with Rhode Island College. And so Shelby is, she was an undergraduate, she's graduated, but she was an undergraduate intern that was going to be coming here to observe therapy sessions and work on a project, and I thought, I have the project. So Shelby and the two seniors collaborated, and this is what the collaboration, this is the outcome. This, when it comes right now, is on my website, and is also on the Metcap Speech Pathologist Law. The speech pathologists at Metcap are going to use this, it's a padlet. They're gonna use this interactive padlet with the students at Metcap. And then I also, just for a better hearing in Speech Month, which just happened to be this month, I sent this out to all of the junior high teachers and senior high teachers, just to let them know the amazing work that Michaela and Rachel had done and to just highlight the partnership that I have with Rhode Island College. So I'll let Shelby kind of describe to you a little bit, and then we can kind of show you the pieces to it.
Hi, my name is Gibson. I'm a classroom, and I'm in Mrs. Blake's class. People are special in different ways. One of the things that makes me feel special is my gift. I'm deaf, too, and that means that you're a year younger than me. AJ and I have special things to show you. They're called cochlear implants.
You show us your cochlear implant? That's Gibson's cochlear implant. And what do they do, buddy?
They help us here.
Yes.
The cochlear implant is a big word, so I call it CI. C is for cochlear, and I is for... CI are amazing, because they're like bionic ears. Sometimes I land a question to both my CI. How does that thing stick to your head?
Like which thing?
My CI.
Can I see it? Right there, you have something right there that sticks on. How does that stick?
There's a magnet. There's a magnet inside. The magnet here connects to the magnet in my head. The inside and the outside have to work together. Yeah. When I disconnect this, I can't hear. Look. When it's on, look, I can hear.
So do you, so do you ever take your CI off?
Yes, when I go in the water, before I go in the water, and before I take a nap in the afternoon, and before I take a nap in the night.
Is there anything especially, like cool, that you like about having your cochlear implants?
Yes. At night, I don't have to hear my little brother when I'm asleep.
So if...
My baby brother, he drives in the car, and I don't wake him, do it, that. Can't hear. I don't have to listen to the neighbor's moose or crowing in the morning.
Did you hear it?
You, you hear that?
So is there any special thing that your friends and classmates could do to help you with your CI?
Yeah, I can chew on my CI, and then, in case I ever lose it on the way out, and they can help me find it.
Yeah, you can learn what it looks like.
In case they see it, too.
You can learn what it looks like, awesome. This is what Gibson's CI looks like, the outside piece. Can you show me what your CI headpiece looks like? In case that would ever be on the playground? Okay, it comes detached. Sometimes it can come detached like this. And it might have a sticker, or it might be plain.
Please keep water away from my CI, and please do not splash water everywhere. One more way that you could help is by talking clearly to me. No mumbling. That's all, folks. We're excited for making friends this year. Bring them rocks!
So part of what I had to do, we, I was in a clinical class, so we had to get observation hours, and I was with Mrs. Sur for a while, and she had the project. We had to do a project where we did something for the speech pathologists that indirectly helped them. So something that we wanted to do, but didn't really have time to do because of their caseload and all the things they have to do. So, but she gave me this project, and I thought, perfect, because it was something that she wanted to do for the middle school and the elementary school. So what I did was, I, she gave me the padlet website, so I kind of played around with it, saw how it worked. And then I started finding information for the padlet. And I would just get all the information, put it on the padlet, and then when we would meet in sessions with Michaela and Rachel, we would kind of have them try to put it in our own word and kind of make it kid-friendly in a way. And then they even were able to put some of their own motivational quotes and things they'd like to say to them to make them feel good, or things that you would like to do, like the padlet's called "Being a Good Friend to Someone with a Communication Problem". And a lot of the videos we have, Mrs. Cerro, there's a lot of videos, a lot of them kind of explain different types of speech disorders or speech or communication problems, and, yeah. And they kind of put it in a good perspective for kids to get a good understanding of what kids have, some of these children have to deal with, why they act the way they do sometimes, and how you can interact with them appropriately and make them feel better. So, we have, Michaela and Rachel came up with these, how to be a good friend. And then some of these videos, just kind of, either about, these two are about stuttering, and just watching them about cochlear implants. The girls also came up with these motivational quotes that they simply would like to brag about or say about where things adjust and make them feel good. We have some information about autism, and then some great kids' videos, you have video of Arnold there. And then some anti-voting videos as well. So the girls helped a lot. We have them help choose the background, okay, setting up all the layout and everything, and asking if they like things. So part of the project was for them to talk to me and interact with me. And you know, we have one for morning, just practicing that.
For these girls, communication with unfamiliar persons. You heard Mrs. Kennedy talk a little bit about Michaela. When Michaela didn't know Mrs. Kennedy, she didn't interact with her that much. So Shelby was a new person to them, and they really developed an awesome collaboration. And they would meet together to talk through, and some of these things, they were kind of, it was nice to hear the girls take on what is something that someone could say to make you feel confident, make you feel good. So these posts that you see are there for words and things that, you know, Rachel said that every day she likes to say to herself, even on my weakest days, I get a little bit stronger. So it was just nice to hear from both girls who have significant communication problems and articulation difficulties that make it very difficult for other people to understand them. So just to see the girls collaborate with Shelby would be awesome. Thank you.
Okay. I included this little cartoon only because I think it's interesting. In your school, you have inclusion students, inclusion facilitators, inclusion classrooms, inclusion programs? No. Why not? Because everyone's included, that's for that every day. And I think we do a very good job, and we're getting better. Next, I would like to have the support professionals, school psychologists, and their social worker. They're gonna do a brief presentation for you. Do you want me to go from this side here? So when we were talking about, what, I think what I'm going to do first is, there is about a three-minute video, WPRI, that I think will be helpful for you to see.
Only on ICRS News tonight, we're looking at how local schools are keeping track on the mental health of students to prevent school violence and tragedies like suicides. The National Association of School Psychologists says there should be a minimum number of counselors per number of students.
And we wanted to see how many local schools made the cut, so we checked in every district in the state to find out.
I didn't know actually that he was having this sort of depression. Just knew that he wasn't himself.
Jill Berry could see that her fourteen-year-old son, Matt, was slipping away from her. Now she says she wishes Matt had just one more person to reach out to before he took his own life in July.
Some of the work I think I could have helped with, Matt Arcon.
Co-captain of the North Cumberland Middle School baseball team, an honor student, a good friend, and loving little brother. Berry says Matt also struggled with depression and had been in therapy since he was eight years old. According to the U.S. Surgeon General, one in five students will experience a significant mental health challenge of one form or another.
There's too much going on with these kids, emotional issues, issues, you know, from home and outside, stimulus of a community and world.
Every school district in Rhode Island employs a network...
Every school district in Rhode Island employs a network of mental health professionals like guidance counselors and social workers. The National Association of School Psychologists says these positions are critical, and the group recommends districts employ one psychologist for every 500 to 700 students, depending on the level of need. The guideline is aimed at preventing school violence, student suicides, and tragedies like lullaby and Sandy Hook. We wanted to see if schools in Rhode Island meet that recommended ratio, so we requested data from every district in the state. Of the 32 that responded, more than half do not.
Statewide and fifthly, able to get to that capacity of maybe not exactly matching those standards, but getting closer to them, there would be tremendous benefit.
The districts with the best psychologists to student ratio include Exeter West Greenwich, Narragansett, Central Falls, and Citeway. Among the districts which fell below the guideline, when Sockit, Foster Gloucester, Newport, Patucket, and Providence.
The goal really should be for there to be a school psychologist in each individual school building.
In Cumberland, the district just misses the recommendation with one psychologist for every 775 students. Berry says her son Matt did see Cumberland school counselors and psychiatrists, but it still wasn't enough. She says if all school staffers were to take on EGM mental health training, it would make for more sense of eyes able to spot potential warning signs in a child.
They know what to say to a child when they see the happiness, when they see something is wrong.
Many school districts tell us tight budgets have made it difficult to employ the suggested amount of mental health professionals, though several like West Dorwicke have recently made new hires. You can log on to our website to see how your child's school district ranks. Use our interactive map to compare the ratio of school psych-
So I wanted to take a look at how we actually did there. And the report has some interesting information in it. So I broke down what our staffing actually looks like. Our total enrollment as of last week was 1,671 students. Of that number, we have 26 students who are out of district, they're our school 190. They actually do not come to our school, they're out placed, in out of district placements. Then we have our school 990, those are service-only students, and those are 26 students. They may be our walk-in speech and language or OT students who are homeschooled, but they do not actually attend our schools. In our preschool, we have 47 students in our preschool. So in actuality, grades K through 12, we are servicing 1,572 students. So what does our current staffing look like in regards to school psychologists? At Lima Preschool, with 47 students, we have an early childhood coordinator slash new psychologist. So Mrs. Porcy is the early childhood coordinator, but she's also a school psychologist. So she services those students in that building. At Wildwood K through 12, there's 288 students, and currently we have 1.6 school psychologists. At Metcalf, grades 3 through 6, we have 505 students with 1.4 school psychologists, that's two days a week right now. Junior-Senior High, grades 7 through 12, 779 students with 1.0 school psychologist, that's Mrs. Largio. And then we have, in the last, last year, we had a 1.00 school psychologist intern. And we had one this year as well, and we anticipate we will have one next year. So that's a 1.0. So anticipated for 215, 216 to increase the Metcalf school psychologist position to 1.6. And then again, we have that intern 1.0. Our current staffing for school social workers, we have at the elementary level of 1.0, the junior-senior high at 1.0, and a social work intern. And we anticipate we will have someone again next year, but that will be for 16 hours a week. You can see the recommendations for school psychologists, 500 to 700 students. And then for social workers, the recommendation is one for every 400. And I believe there is legislation pending to change that. So I just wanted to give you that breakdown so that you can see that in terms of school psychologists, we're really, we're very close to where we need to be, where we need to be for those numbers. So Mrs. Farah asked us to come today to kind of talk about some of the mental health issues and conditions that we're seeing in our school district. I've been here since the 97, 98 school year, and every year, it's a little more and more as we're getting into it. And as you can see in that video, it's, you know, one in five students are dealing with a mental health condition that is impacting them in school. So those are the students that come to us. We might get referrals from teachers, another student, parents, the students sometimes help refer themselves. They get to know us in 7th grade, we go in and we do whole class-wide instruction in their health classes to get them to know who we are. This year, we increased that a little bit by doing stress management sessions with them, two stress management sessions with all the 7th graders, so they really were able to get to know us and who we are in the building, and that there is help available to them and how to access that help. But within our school, we're seeing students with all these, with mood disorders and anxiety, some students that have experienced some kind of trauma in their life, and it's having an impact on their educational, their social functioning in school. Students with ADHD, we saw Kamala's presentation with the students that, you know, have difficulty sitting still, difficulty accessing the curriculum that they're being instructed in because of some of the mental health conditions that they're challenged with. Families also, there's a lot of families that are going through tough times, whether there's some violence in families or homelessness, and Mr. Izowski works with those families. Divorced illnesses, parents that have, you know, significant illnesses, or someone else that's living with a family that does. We also saw on that slide, the autistic spectrum students have a tough time with their social communication, so working with them. And like Mrs. Kennedy said, it's a lot of repetition, they need a lot of repetition in there all day long and in all areas of their school, not just in session with us, but in the classrooms, in the lunchroom, PE, the foods class, so we're working with teachers and parents and the students to try to put in the supports that they need to help them be successful in school.
I'm Alan Izowski, I'm a social worker here at the junior-senior high school. Been a social work, school social worker for 20-plus years. The last 10 years here at the junior-senior high school, and I also cover Lima on an as-needed basis if there are any crises of any kind. These are just some of the things that we all do, Steve, Liz, myself, the other two part-time school psychologists district-wide, where we lead school-wide programs, really focusing on the social-emotional functioning of our kids. And I think we'd all agree, at least I would in the last 20 years, our kids are coming to school less socially-emotionally prepared. I think they're doing okay academically, and we're getting them up to snuff academically, but I think we'd all agree that as far as coping skills, as far as life skills, as far as the ability to deal with their emotions, they're not coming to school ready to do that. And we're seeing that at all levels, they just are not able to deal with the emotional problems they are dealing with in their life. So we provide whole-class instruction to try and teach social-emotional competencies, specifically in grade 3 and grade 7. As Liz said, we did a whole 7th grade presentation on coping and stress management skills. From that presentation to all 7th grade health classes, we whittled down a smaller group where Liz and I then did an intervention with the 10 kids who identified themselves as the most stressed and needing the most intervention. That came about last year through some of the conversations I think you folks were having around cutting and the high number of kids we're seeing, particularly in the 6th and 7th grade level, who are cutting themselves on a fairly regular basis. And not only cutting, but using the email and internet to share their pictures, compare their cuts, kind of challenge one another to make it worse, to exacerbate the problem. So we're seeing it growing in the way kids are coping, not in such a great manner. So we also provide awareness and training to staff. I did a training on cutting and self-injurious behavior last year. Liz, myself, and the school student assistance counselor did a suicide prevention, suicide awareness training to the high school faculty this year. We run a lot of groups in the area of social skills and emotional regulation, safety, behavior, and organization. I think we'd have to admit, though, one of our main jobs, though, is crisis intervention. We just see kids and try and hold them together because they're coming knocking at our door just in a heap, in a puddle. And they just don't have the ability or the skills to deal with whatever's going on at home, in their personal life, bullying, whatever it is that's going on. We do a lot of suicides assessments and planning for that. We try and connect with students and families to resources and supports, trying to make referrals out for parents, to groups, to individual therapists, provide ongoing consultation with staff, families, and outside providers, trying to support students with transition, and there's a big focus on transitioning kids out of high school now and getting them ready for the world. Members of the district-wide safe and drug-free schools teams, those of you that may not have seen it, part of, a big part of our push this year was creating that Parents' Corner website, where there is an actual website on the EWG that you can access, information about all of these issues we talked about. We're members of the Strategic Planning Committee to address safety, security, and wellness, and students' family support. We run advisory group and maintain that parent resource site. At the junior-senior high, my caseload is about 26 kids that actually have IEPs, both at the junior-senior high. And the number of kids I've seen, just kind of at least two or three times that are not identified, is probably in the range of 60 through the year, for whatever reason that may be. Trying to assess if they're a risk or whatever else is going on, so the numbers continue to grow.
I think it's also important to note that we have a partnership with Family Services of Rhode Island in hopes of getting more help to families right here in the community as opposed to them having to go out. Unfortunately, Family Services, like many other agencies, are overwhelmed with many students, and issues do not stay. So that partnership has not been as successful this year as we would have liked to have been. I'm in the process of having a conversation with a gentleman from Anchor Counseling Services in hopes that maybe we can work with him some type of collaboration because in many cases, if parents have to go too far, we find that children don't get the counseling. So, and then Liz just outlined your additional duties.
So on top of all the other things, we're also members of the weekly special education team, where referrals, eligibility, incentive, B-teams. We do Basque behavior rating scales, social histories, which are very important because it kind of looks at the whole picture. A lot of times, we get the, you know, a diagnosis, or you're getting the educational, but there's a huge piece missing. What we look at through social histories is what's happening at home, what happened from birth on, what they're developmental, like, what is the family history? Is there a history of mental illness or substance abuse? What is a counseling history, you know, have they been in counseling before? When did the concerns come upon? We're talking about a child who, since kindergarten, has some academic problems, or is it a recent problem? Cognitive assessments, functional behavioral assessments, what's been learned recently? Is that all behavior has a function? You can't just look at the behavior, look at what the behavior is serving. We do a lot of observations, both as part of IEPs, special ed, as well as any student that there's any concern. We see students on individual education plans, both individually and groups. I personally run two groups a day for services on top of other groups, but I have two particular groups of students that I see every day for social skills, very intensive services for these students. We do a lot of consultation with teachers, families, outside providers, through the IEP, response intervention. BET is the Behavioral Emotional Triage Team. We meet at Metcalf, myself, the psychologist, the building principal, vice principal, and talk about any students that are any concerned whatsoever, to kind of identify them early on, so that we can kind of help them out.
So in addition, these are to just add on some of the trainings that we launched just this past year. Every year, we go to many trainings just to stay current with the best practices in our field. And as of this year, this is the, these are the trainings that we participated in. Maybe, like, some of them, AI didn't go to, but Steve did, or this is district-wide for all the school sites and social workers, to stay current with the best practices and so helping our children.
And this was the first official year of support professionals being evaluated through the Rhode Island Evaluation System. And most of the folks have been working on how they utilize technology to get the information out to parents and the school community. So the result is your parent resource website. Also, becoming more adept at using the data to inform your behavioral interventions. So they've been working a lot around those pieces in regards to that evaluation model.
Do you have any questions? This is a pretty serious piece of the presentation, and we thought it would be important for you to hear this.
First of all, thank you, because we just had donors write lots of proposals. And it's so easy to congratulate this, and they deserve credit. For all the students who, you know, just can't get to that point, you guys pulled so much work and things. The question I have is, are you finding that students are more willing to seek you out? Or is that getting better, or is it stagnant? Do you have any ideas about it?
I do think it's getting better. I think by having our presence down at the 7th grade, and there was left off the slide, it's happening at Wildwood, also in kindergarten, where the school social worker and school psychologists are going in and running groups with students. And, you know, it's really, like, we attended a training last week, like, it's really the stigma of mental health conditions to try to lessen that, and I do think it has because I think out in the real world, like, some popular people, some really successful people have come forward and have talked about their illnesses and maybe what if would have, maybe would have helped them, and has brought awareness, awareness. I mean, it's not, you know, it's not perfect, but I do think that students also are realizing, like, even some of those honors students were having a real tough time during senior week and during trying to do oral presentations, and we worked with many of those students, just having, you know, you know, not actually a diagnosed mental health. A lot of these students are just having some kind of test anxiety, or had some, maybe they are some kind of trauma in their life that's very short-term, they saw an accident or something happened to them, and working through that. So I think it has gotten better, but are we reaching anyone, everyone?
I think another big population that we're seeing is students referring other kids. So I'm seeing a lot of students come to me, "You know, Mr. Greenberg, I'm concerned about this child, I'm concerned about this person." So I think that that's a big, I think people are realizing that it's not something you want to keep secret. You know, I did a lot of education with the Metcalf kids about if there's a safety concern, you're not going to lose them as a friend, you're actually being a better friend by talking. So I think that's a bigger thing we're seeing now, is kids are more likely to come forward with a concern and not be as concerned by keeping it a secret, because the reality is that their pride or duty is to protect their friend. And, you know, I tell kids, you know, "They'll get over you," telling them, that's a short-term thing that's going to happen. The more long-term is, if you don't say something and that child does do something to hurt himself, how are you going to be able to, basically look in the mirror and say, "I could have done something." So I definitely see that as a bigger thing.
That's huge, because how many times do you read about the tragedy and then that later, for some?
Yeah. And it's a message they're getting at the young level. I mean, I went into 3rd grade health classes this year, once a month, and did social skills lessons, all about being assertive and being conflict resolution, and all that stuff. And one of the messages I did say is, "You need to come to us with any concerns. Let us decide whether or not we need to do something about it, you report it." So I definitely think-
And that's something that Mrs. Slattery on the junior high side is hoping that next year Liz and I will do is addressing those kind of standby, those standards by, or bystanders, getting them to come forward and speak up when they know someone's cutting or threatening suicide, or just having a terrible time at home, or struggling with an undiagnosed anxiety or depression, is really working with those kids to kind of step up, step forward, you know, not be silent. I think one of the concerns we have, though, is when we start identifying some of these kids, for those of you that were following the story in the Province Journal about the state of mental health in Rhode Island, it's abysmal. The state of mental health itself is just abysmal. So once we identify these kids, sometimes referring them out for services, or trying to get them a bed at Bradley, or trying to get them a bed at Rupp Butler, if they're older adolescents, is tough. Or if a child and adolescent psychiatrist, forget it. It just, yeah, right. So, you know, where do we go when we identify- So, you know, what, where do we go when we identify the problem? Where do we send it? So, we try and put together as comprehensive a plan as we can, but the state of mental health is a mess.
Not a prayer.
No, unfortunately.
And thank you, it's hard work to do. I think the key will be to figuring out how we can reach more students and getting the mindset that before students can sit down and learn reading, writing, and math, they need to be socially and emotionally ready to do that. That's very hard in this day and age where we are pressed to meet the standards and all of that. But just the beginnings have been happening with staff going into the health classes. We hope to do more of that and spread a broader message. And then it's also, I think, will be very helpful, the trainings that staff just went through from the 19th and 20th, making everyone aware and look out. So, we're moving forward, but it is a torment.
And I want to thank you too, because you always have that, for our kids and these issues. So, that's, we're very, we're happy. Thank you, I appreciate that, I'm very lucky to have this student.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
And last but not least, Mrs. Bruce, my preschool.
Good evening. I could actually make a nice segue from, from that. I am a school psychologist, as was mentioned earlier. And I think one of the important things that we do at the early childhood level is focus on social emotional development and building those early skills that kids need before they even enter into the K to 12 system. So, I think that it is, you know, we're hoping, and I am part of the Strategic Planning Committee, to build better resources, better understanding of mental health issues, and just supports for all students. So, I think that's an important thing. So, I'm just going to do a quick piece on what's going on at Lyman this year. I'm actually not going to go in order, I realize. Just to touch base on Bright Stars, that is the quality rating system I talked about last year, that all preschools in the state are required now to be a part of. We entered last May and were awarded four out of the five stars. I think currently, I think it's at 38 or 40 programs in the state that are at the four-star level, and there are maybe 29, I think, at the five-star level, so we're definitely at the top. Most programs are three stars and below. I hoped to apply for our fifth star this month, as my report is coming due. But we had, when I refused some of the grants, and slowed down the grant process, it didn't allow me to quite get there, but we're hoping to apply in September. It'll require the state coming out to do another assessment on our program in order to move that star ahead, but I'm fairly confident we'll make it. So, what, the big news that I had this year, I think, towards, in terms of grants, two years ago, we had an interim quality improvement grant, it was about $10,000. That was spent pretty much solely on materials, and that was based on kind of how the state allowed the funding to go through. So, we were able to put into our classrooms a lot of updated materials that hadn't been, academic materials that had not been updated in quite some time. So, that was great for the teachers. Classrooms are really full of materials that children can access, the Montage Prime Literacy, Science, Mathematics. Our social studies purchase this year was new furniture for the children. Our tables and chairs were not the appropriate size, so the kids' feet couldn't touch the floor, which is a big deal when you're learning to write and do fighting water activities. We were able to purchase new lockers, so we had better storage for the children's possessions. Some non-permanent playground equipment, and then a shed. I don't know if any of you have been out that way, but we have a brand-new shed, it's really nice. So, we were ordered just over $16,000. That was a pretty solid grant. The highest you could have been awarded was $30,000, but that's all I applied for, and I got the full amount. So, we were really proud to have been able to do that and meet those goals that we had set forth. The next grant that I applied for was through Lisk, which they're an agency in the state that really addresses facilities, and particularly a big childcare facility component. So, I'm just going to hand out just a part of my presentation, just to be able to hold on to it, it's about playground facilities. So, the grant that I applied for, I applied for a capital grant to replace our playground structure. At this point, we've been cited three separate times for the safety of our playground structure. It is not appropriate for children ages three to five. Our Eckers evaluation last year and our Bright Stars evaluation cited several major hazards. We failed that section completely. We had unfenced sections, a lack of cement bollards, that was education for me. Those are big cement things that are supposed to block cars from going into playground, I had to learn about those. Our platform for our climbing structure didn't have enough guardrail, and majority of the equipment could not be considered safe and appropriate for our children. And that's what are ongoing this year, particularly since kindergarten left our building a few years ago, where we just had three- to five-year-olds. The structure is not sound for them, and it's a major safety concern for the teachers on a daily basis, in keeping the kids safe. So, and then again, when we had a consult from Lisk in the fall, they also said that it was unsafe climbing structure. So, I applied for a grant to replace that. I was denied that grant because they said that we didn't have a plan in place. They want to see programs really planning the space so that it evolves over time and really meets the needs of children in several ways. And one of my dreams is to really have a more natural playground, which is a trend that's really happening now. So, utilizing the space, we have a beautiful space at Lyman, huge open field that, that's pretty much where the children do most time, just run around the field. But, and the climbing structure is okay, but it's not very inspired. And we would like to bring more of our early learning standards outside. So, the items I was able to purchase through our quality improvement grant were some large musical instruments, some drums, a block and spiel. I bought a huge outdoor easel, so that children could bring arts and creative arts and music and things like that outside. We purchased last summer a new house that can bring out dramatic play. Unfortunately, we do have people who come onto the playground that are not part of Lyman, and they destroyed our, our new playhouse. So, that was very sad, that happened over April vacation, but now we have a new lock on our gates, I'm really excited about that. And, so, we're trying to build a learning environment that's appropriate for preschoolers outside, as well as we're doing inside, so that's really my goal. So, we were awarded a five, awarded a $5,000 grant to do the planning and a safety audit. So, that's part of what has to be done, so that it'll, really, we'll get a whole plan of how unsafe or safe our playground is. Verbally, the contractor I met with once gave me a few items that we kind of needed to address right away, and those have been addressed, but kind of an overall plan. One of the things he cited that I wasn't even aware of was that we're supposed to have just a visual safety check-in plan on a weekly and a monthly basis. We don't have that in place, so that's something that we need to develop over the next year. So, our, my goal, and I wrote on here, is certainly, safety is number one, and making sure we don't want to have any liability risk open, you know, right now. My worries is all the other people who are not part of Lyman come onto the playground and utilize it in an unsafe way, and they fall on school property, and I worry about that constantly. And then the aesthetics over the other area, is really creating a beautiful and inviting playground for our children. We would like to be able to provide a safe area for them to ride bikes and scooters. It's a development and progression for them motorically. Right now, they're kind of on the, it's an actual driveway, so it is open to cars, and that's a safety issue that we try and monitor, but that's our only space currently. And also to build in some shade and shelter for the children, because our space is wonderful, but it's very open. There are really no trees or any natural shade on the playground. So, part of the grant hopefully will provide us with a schematic drawing of what would be a wonderful playground. And at some point, I'm hoping either that more grants become available for capital funding, so I can help start to build that playground, or eventually the district or other fundraising methods will be able to move us forward to providing an appropriate playground for the children. Any questions? Thank you.
Okay. Sorry, I'm in 30 minutes, sorry. Thank you all very much for your patience and listening. We try and hear in 30 minutes, but very difficult, a lot of information. Thank you very much. Okay. Well, thank you all.
Thank you so much.
You have the approval of the regularity commence of May 12, and the Phillips's Secretary Session commence of May 12, and the legislative form of amendments of May 12. Under personnel. We have. We have a list of non-renewals, this is from layout. There is a revised list that is in the first supplemental packet, there is a name that has been removed, and that is because on Friday, we had our first job fair, and there was a vacancy that existed. I think the job fair, the one we called, was eligible for, and therefore placed her back, and she is no longer. Who are required to be a member of ours. In addition, we have a resignation that is part of our third, the second supplemental packet. This is a resignation for the purpose of retirement that came in, or I received it at about 5:30 this afternoon. So, the letter that the teachers submitted to me is attached as well. This is a big loss for our junior senior high school, it's the math and geometry chair, Mrs. Pearl. She's been here since the doors opened to junior senior high school. So, that's a tough one. It is not something that I was surprised about, and she's been having conversations with me, but she's in peace with her decision, so we assure her as well. In addition, we have a homeschool approval, and this is for the next school. 15, 16 school year. We have a monthly bills, and I believe, that car. Motion to a second, second.
First class. It's in a couple of places also. It's because the time's changed communication. He asked for rest.
That's the approval, so they approved the request.
Yep. Super tense water to the families. Communication. We have the fourth class. The 15, 16 budget.
Yeah, but I will say that the first round of personnel changes, the treasurer is actually working through the budget. She will be all day today. And as, as we planned, we've covered the additional kindergarten classroom that's opening. We are opening up a new preschool classroom and section of preschool based on the first movement. Those positions have already been posted in the newspaper, they were not paid at the job fair. And all of the lost in those new positions, which were not included in the original budget, must be accounted for, and all taken care of for nutrition, same position, and we're still coming in.
Set those positions to post for the newspaper?
I'm still sorry.
Okay, in business, we have the science kids.
So, we have a bid for the false science kids, which are used for the K6 science curriculum. And this is the first year, we actually went out to a full bid on it. And you can see the results of the bid. There are two elements to the bid, the base price, which covers the first three years, and then in the second year, we add a, another element to, to the curriculum. And you can see the year two base. Overall, Health Education came in at $85,490. East Bay Collaborative came in at $70,050. However. In year one, the base price is lower, so we go with Health Education. In year two, oh, that's where it is. They do not include, the East Bay Collaborative did not include the premium content for. That is the next post.
So, they automatically delta the other, they were extra, I expect. That was the other side. Is there a way to present some shelters?
No, so, so let me, let me, let me back it up. So, that's, it's transposed, the header is transposed, that's what it's done. East Bay Collaborative should have been on one. The Delta Education is common.
So, Delta are automatically.
The Delta are actually, it's correct. So, on the base bid, it looks like, you know, the, East Bay would have been lower, but they did not exclude any of the, maybe the premium content. Delta Education doesn't. So, the recommendation is for Level Education. It's just the header is transposed. So, the three-year all-inclusive footbase bid, year one base bid, year two, and the three, and the ten, for East Bay, that's for Delta Education, that's $7,050.
Jim, are they, how long are the concessions?
Well, for some of these kids, we're purchasing our way. And then for some of the kids, we do an annual refresh, it's like a combination. I think the price that we have here is pretty consistent with what we pay, what we have paid in the past. We've always gone for, it's been, we've been in a war with James, and we've been in a war with Delta Education. It's been, it's been a lot of conversation between those two companies, and it's gotten, it's gotten interesting. And the bid process, it was the first time we've done it, the bid process was just to protect us. So, we wanted to put it out there, given both companies have the opportunity to bid, we review it, but we prefer anybody to make a selection, and then we have a standard process through which we select it, and individuals to provide the services for us. But there is no change to what's been budgeted, it's very slight. In fact, it actually worked out to be a little less than what we were budgeting, so we've got to adjust. But it's the same, it's the same material that we've been using for many years now.
So, it's not.
16, 16,000, so I have to make a mixture here, right? And then you're assuming that you work with all the next, year two, and three, and seven, so.
Right, so, so. Right, so it would be, so for the base bid price, the top line, $51,590. And that would be divided by three, so that's on annual basis, so if you're asking over here, like, two months?
Right.
So, that would be an annual basis for that. And then in year two, you're picking up this other element, that's for K2 and 3, 5, et cetera. It's out of my, I don't want that to hurt you, but it's part of the curriculum. That's $18,000. That's eighteen thousand four hundred sixty for the balance of the two years. So it's fifty-one five nine for three years. Then you're picking up this new curriculum piece, eighteen thousand four sixty for the last two years. So additional nine thousand two thirty. So year two, as I understand it, that didn't, that's not even existing right now. So we don't do that. That would be another. That's a whole collection.
Yes.
Maybe that would be part of the next year.
Okay, do you suggest for me, keep making that statement? Next time, can you put it, it's no additional charge, you're just right. Try to get back to this. Yeah. Okay, no additional charge. Just, just one more step.
For sixteen seventeen budget here.
Right, as long as, I mean, you've been on the column, it's a blank area.
Right, I get what you're saying. So put in no charge there, right?
Okay, including.
Including those prices.
Okay, I would suggest that this gets more. So we can. Get what we're pushing here. And that we have traction.
I don't know that there is a, that there's a deadline. You're talking July one, this will be your start. I think it's just notifying the bidders. The award.
Okay. I just, I just hope this runs, I make the change.
Well, I was wondering.
Yeah.
And will the order of the bid be just for the base at this point with the options?
No, no, that's. It's a three-year bid. I'm not sure where's the option.
Well, the additional expenses. All the second year two base.
We asked you that, I would part with the bid spec. We, so there was the year one, so it covered one element of the curriculum. And then year two, we're introducing that second element of the program, but of the curriculum. But that would only be for two years. So the first base prices were, give us the price for three years. What it's going to cost for three years. And then in year two, give us the base price for what it would cost for the remaining two years, which is we get the nine thousand two hundred and third. The difference between the two organizations, the two companies is one base price includes the premium content. One base price you needed to add in the premium content. But that, all of that was part of the bid spec. And it was, remember, Raffinelli is asking us that the, where their blanks that we indicate that it's included in the price of premium content is included in the price.
Yeah, we get the columns correct.
Right.
You know, it's not only on the backside, it's in the actual letter itself. Doesn't mean a lot of sense.
Any agenda other than the question that's the budgeting annual expense? Is sixteen, uh, years to three will be one point five? Are you memo?
Correct, correct. So for two thousand fifteen sixteen, budget annual expense, sixteen, sixteen, either two thousand fifteen sixteen.
The difference is that some of these materials are purchased. So after they're, after they're purchased, then there's not the expense of continuing to send that and freshen. And that's what, that's what I say.
Sure. Well, I was just, I, my stupid question, but are these replacements in the JamesNet? Or is it just a similar product for? Have we always used the box or is it new?
Well, what's happening is the science kits themselves, through JamesNet, which is the company that we work with, other science instruction, whole materials of our science instruction, professional development for science. The kits are changing to align with next generation.
Oh, science.
And as a result of that, we needed to put that, the materials that we've been purchasing in recent, for the past several years. And there's been some, some decision to shift some of the units and shift some of the rear levels. It's all based on quality to next generation plans. That's why, because it's socially different, we need to be, we need to change for organizations to apply. Exactly what we're trying to add to us to use.
So is it similar in that they do one kit per quarter semester?
Generally, three kits per year.
Yeah.
So next year, they'll be a combination of two kits. And then some of the kits that they do second to transition in. And that's where the year two material comes in, to be fully transitioned to another kit. Second, that's it.
Okay, that's good. Okay.
Gatsby forty-three, forty-five actual evaluations to USI consultant. It's not brought by you, no actual evaluation. Went up to bid, advertised, received one bid. It's the incumbent. Because it's actually a little less than their last four hundred dollars, less than their last evaluation. This will be important. And we will, otherwise it's necessary as part of our funding requirement, but it will be important. Provide more information regarding our whole thing. For our whole discussion. So asking, as I said, the requests is to be ordered, the Gatsby forty-three, forty-five actual evaluation services. Now, USI consultant, six thousand five hundred dollars. They were to.
We have done this week, we have the, what is leading along this question about? You know, the letters have, thank you very much. I actually feel hopeful that this issue will be addressed. So after all these years of talking about this, so.
Well, you know, we have a forum and then there was a conversation about how to address the first issue. So, there was a question about that. There's a lot to do. So.
So it takes care of the private blessing. The attack of the other position to fall. To make this question. Okay, let's see. The base in the, if there are capital projects.
Yeah, so we had a pre-bid conference. Right. And there were four construction GCs there of five security posts. And the denim is going to be issued by Gerardo as a result of that conversation. Just giving some additional guidance to the security posts. And for accepting bids, I believe it's next. The Tennessee season is over. We're waiting to hear when that our Gatsby is going to mobilize. Which kind of, which one's more? They, they know when school lands. They'd like to start earlier, but I haven't heard anything, so. I just don't know if I told them, maybe I was a little shocked at the way that project would take. They're saying that's a one, two month project. Not really great, so, yeah. Yeah, so I was a little surprised by that, but they know this, they know this. Well, that's, that's a whole, you know, that's, I need to hear from them to say, we're ready to go. And I can do people who needs.
And so we're waiting on the bids, we're not in that chart. And then the other thing, that is a variable, as we modelize all the changes based on staff changes, nutrition savings, it's only question. We'll get the budget along again to see if there's to bring those related one to, or all of the nutrition technologies in, which will reduce our exposure throughout the time, so it's, it's affect positively. So lots of issues that government has to change, but nothing has changed.
You have the tennis, can you, I know there's a school, um, girls tennis team, it's got practices, what have? Yeah, you want me to check on the date when they started before you? They're like, I found practice, it starts on, all factors start. I'm going to date them right off. So maybe that being on, on their target.
Does that mean the tennis camps, they usually hold it in the summer on June two? That I think is eleven, eleven to four, it's a summer camp.
Yeah, so. So.
I think, I think we need to get exact dates on start and, and then I had a conversation with, with JamesNet. Of course, I can't see if they can, they can find, you know, the timeframe that's available. Often you need to look at some alternatives. I know there's a suite down the street, I was just a favor. But, uh, no. We allow them to use our track while the track is under construction. And so they know that they owe us money. And they look like they're probably having to do the tents.
They actually are. That'll work, that'll work. I think you have multiple, end of July, first of August. I know, but when he said two, that's not.
Last one would have to cash in on ticket.
Well, it captured you that everyone is talking after. If it's far away, you can, or another song. The next comment.
Okay, uh, reports, comments?
First of all, one, the second one thought was this new West Village parade, yes, but that was really, was one very visible, very positive for the district. I thought you really kind of knew. And with the sign on.
I asked for insurance, if I could walk with the thing. Like he had bought gave me the main shirt to wear.
Big and body.
I think he had that.
No, okay. All children.
It was great. Oh, listen. The, you've been on a training. The president, he doesn't have that, or you mentioned that?
Well, it's come to include it in the status report, but I can give you a, in general. The, that is about an eight-hour training and it's a full, a full training. We had just over twenty people that were in the first run of the training. Eighteen, eighteen staff members, the SRO, which is actually the, this is what that West Village place put on our and then a member of the AIC that are due from here and forward. It is a, it's training that the security for the grant that I've reported on previously, I'm in a training. We have another session that we are planning for October, we actually secure the dates. And I need to send those out to people that are on the meeting list. And the training addresses a lot of the meetings that were spoken about tonight by members of our company staff. I did have all of them participate in the training because even though they have the knowledge, I think it's important for them to know the language that's being used to train those who are not familiar with all of the events that we were taught. So that we can have conversations with people who know more than us. And the training actually gives us a certificate. And the certificate is, basically tells us that we have the skill, we can test out the end of this as well, about the skills to be able to recognize and refer more greatly of children who are showing signs of, of struggling with health issues. I, I believe it is something that every single member of our community should be exposed to. And I know what the cost is to run it after the training runs out and is not having twelve-year investment. So my goal is to continue to use the people who have the training, to talk it up, get more people interested, and then require us all to have a certain higher discipline as well, just to lead by example. So I'm requiring every administrator, this is the early ones, every administrator, every guidance counselor, under the staff, nurses, and, and then the lots of volunteers, which included teacher assistants, artists. It was a nice mix of the guys. I already have a full waiting list for the next one. I just have to make sure that it can work for everybody and help those again. So it was a good experience.
Still meeting, as opposed to just holding up the, for instance, the retirement. We have another meeting for her retirement becomes effective. But it's certainly important to get things in play because there's so much else to do when you get a vacation of that as a permanent chair. But hopefully, exactly as required, that we do supplement, tell the agenda that you stay by, that was necessary to do without the forty-eight hours notice.
Well, maybe I'm naive, so I'll let you teach me what, what I don't know. But the, every item that we include in the supplemental is a subset of an agenda item that is already posted. There is nothing that is new. So we always post resignations. And then it's just in the detail that we provide specific names. So the retirement, for example, was still a resignation which was posted for the meetings. And then there was just an additional agenda detail, like a change in the agenda.
Understood.
So I, I don't know if that's the difference.
I know you're reading the letter of the law, absolutely. That expires from the categories in the outline of the agenda. And it's, it's all completely supported and which does it for the purposes of the fact that it seems like this is supplemented almost every agenda. So that is to become a practice. And it is just that the materials, just stating in the, in the question, doesn't completely be known, but that was the discussion that I bring this to you tonight in class.
But, okay.
I will get that.
I will get that.
But along those lines, one of the elements had the C-Leg by Austin. And I would like to have time to read those before they were.
Yeah, I actually, I didn't know that that was coming. That's because the, it was part of the special education presentation. And I actually wasn't aware until it was included as part of the supplemental.
And then please note, I didn't vote one way or the other. You can put me down officially as your stretch.
That's good. No, we do that. We do usually have that separate, like, here's the process.
That's good. Um, communication number four, press office number four, that is by the supplement above, and testing the changes proposed. Can you speak to, in general, like how we're doing with it? We're done, as far as testing the listed items this time?
We are, if we're not finished, we are, it's just this school at this point that we're, we're finalizing. I mean, the testing itself was fine. There were no technology glitches. The kids were, the kids that took it were fine. I think it was less of a struggle for the teachers than they thought it was going to be. I think the struggle for the district, there were two struggles for the district. One was the schedule in general, particularly at the secondary level, the elementary level. Because the testing windows are longer than a class period. And with kids having to go to the alternative classes, they basically had to restructure the schedule for, for every day of testing. And it was, it was complex. And then the second struggle were the high percentage of kids that opted out at the high school, in particular, junior high school at the last minute. Or in the middle of the test. So we took a section and took part one of math and then came in with a, a letter that they were opting out for day two. And so I think what people don't realize is that it takes a lot to schedule supervision of every child. And when, and when that changes pretty much on a minute-by-minute basis, it makes it really difficult for us to track who was supposed to be where and which kids are actually taking the test. It was, it actually was more of a disruption in the schedule itself. So it is something that I think we're going to need to address for next year is to design some parameters. How, if that is going to take this.
Do you plan that a summer, a break, or is how it went this year?
Uh, I'll put it on status.
I'm just concerned that I didn't mention to you that the parents posted things to Facebook. This has been going on for the last couple of months from, you know, elementary school through the senior high about stress levels and opting out. You know, I think of those students who had not opted out, maybe they didn't take it as seriously as it would have known that the cohorts were opting out. And so the outcome, level of participation reported of all of us, a lot of them has lost whole structure, so. Jim, I have examples. I can't imagine any frustration level, but the scheduling.
It started out, you know, people are starting like that, but it ended up being, really it just, it just consumed every day of the administrators' time. And it was. There, there were, there were a lot of pieces of disinformation. There were a lot of things that were being spread that were, that are actually not even close to true. And I want to respect every opinion, but at some point, we have to set some boundaries because it got to the point where it was so disruptive for the, the school in general, for the kids that were not supposed to test and the kids that were supposed to test. We had to actually pull staff from teaching their classes that were not scheduled to test to supervise kids who had to go somewhere else because at the last minute, they, parents were sending letters in or they, you know, it was, it was actually insanity. Actually, there's no other way to describe it. So I cannot allow that to happen. However, we, we figure out what the solution is, it has to be much more structured than it was this year. And it only happened at the junior senior high school. Which is interesting because we also had a round of testing in the first semester where we had one parent in the whole school who expressed a concern. And for the second round of testing, the second semester, we had more than sixty percent of the kids ended up opting out. Most parents couldn't even tell me why.
And it was a mark of the exam. They are taking, but it's not the practice.
So it's not, it's not, we need to educate more of this whole means. I mean, it's a good sign that we know.
We, we have discussed bringing it before the committee, Jim and I. It is gonna, it is gonna come before the committee. We talked about when is the right time and, if you don't mind. We were in such, there's a several reasons we didn't bring it sooner. But I was making a lot of loss on it, so I'm, you know, same as you, I'm sure there are people going back for, with parents, educated about the whole process. So anyway, we're trying to figure out whether to come for the committee. I think we were in such a mess with pride not supporting our policy and not knowing what the ramifications were going to be. We wanted to see what the fallout or that, I guess, the final result of what was going to happen without the support network. So we can move forward. So, or Jim is working on putting something together. We are assessing the committee. Because we, I mean, you can have, Jim, we talk about it weekly. So we need to provide information, educational pieces to the parents and frankly, where we stand. In that, again, there's several reasons why we didn't bring it before the committee when, you know, all here.
And in terms of educating, we did run some sessions. I think you came to one of them. It was almost nobody showed up. So from all the questions and concerns that are out there, nobody comes to.
I think you have to, in order to reach the most population, I think you have to do it differently than having, a lot of people are just, with their lives. The media is one more thing to do as opposed to mailing or posting it on the website, which, which gets a lot more people. I think actually, we just have some bright signs. We dropped some.
Twenty, twenty.
So I had been, I was dropping my bench, it's like, it's refuse cop for EWG parent, refuse park. And you see them in all corners. So they're a bright pink signs. So if you're driving by this, it's a bright pink sign. The kid comes home, I don't want to take the test, they find out, take the test. Here's the. So it's that type of grass roots. To be honest, we do that type of grass roots. At your system, that we.
Some parents have called, very few have called, even have a conversation, most just are writing.
Are filling it up, are filling it up.
But the parents that are called, they have asked questions that maybe ask questions back, where is this coming from? And so very widespread that parents believe, based on what they've been told, that it would be a benefit to the district for the kids to opt out because it's the only way that we can get rid of park. And.
But that's the intention. Yes, absolutely, yes.
And again, I mean, I'm willing to do anything, but, but at the point when we were having some of these discussions, remember, we had already run through an entire round at the high school and there was one kid. So this has all kind of been building up for lots of different conversations that happened. And again, I don't want to go away from anybody's point of view, but when it gets to the point where it's disrupting the education of pretty much the entire building, the focal area of time. We actually had less, less going on during that week for the kids that were not tested than you could have ever imagined. Because we didn't have the staff to supervise all of them. Kids that were even old at different times, in the middle of the test. I bet there was, there was a safety. So, bless them.
We will discuss, yeah.
I appreciate that you did, you know, list of government focal conversations. Certainly not those of Congress, this is something that we've been sad with. Who could have prevented it, but now, you know, you've got that invited group of families that some of the desert's all gone down. You know, all the stress that everyone went through, that, you know, I don't want to wait too long for this.
It'll be, it'll be during the, one of our. Okay, important dates. Let's see. Wednesday, June twelve, my next school, I think, um, seeing my graduation is thirteen. I just want to ask, because I already have my gowns, everybody, um, Cheryl, I think you also have your gown.
I don't have it, but.
Did you order?
I did.
Thank you. Uh, you won't have to hang it. Where is the log actually?
Uh, mine is, mine is.
And two, um.
Yeah, there's a session.
So it was good for that. Is it, does it, who are you coming? Terry?
I have a gun, but I may not.
Cheryl, you're taking this one?
Yes.
Terry, just let me know.
I love it.
We do definitely.
I, 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 I called and I said I would watch, but.
Oh, you didn't just have a question?
Yes, we did.
Yep. The memories are, I think, those are fifty. Okay. Okay, Bill's here. Uh, we have ceremony, Mark and I are at the June nineteenth, last day of school, maybe the twenty-third.
So.
July.
It was here, it was here, uh, the panel of all the events about how, how the sense of the, of the committee can be. It's optional, but it's an opportunity, um, the first actual meeting to review the draft occurred today. And then, um, next, you know, that is a common period for the strategic planning team. And the next years, and then we'll get another round of changes. And then there'll be another whole, period for the staff. Finally, we're going to have a, so lots of that.
Uh, there was a mission, uh, it's also, yeah.
We're actually, you actually scheduled it.
Oh, okay.
Gotcha. And then tomorrow night here is a junior senior high, nine hours, like, that's five o'clock. Jack and Forrest are at seven.